Call this meeting door, the Board of Franklin County Commissioners, Wednesday, November 30th, it's eight thirty, roll call.
Mr. Sotomayor.
President.
Mr. Harris. Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is standing here, my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Want to simply, really, read you a Christmas scripture and pray over us. Isaiah 92, "The people who walk in darkness will see a great light; for those who live in a land of deep darkness, a light will shine," or dawn, or flash, or erupt. And let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you that you shine light on a dark world and the darkness inside of us. And so I pray over this moment in history. Every moment is another moment that goes by. And I pray that this moment would be made as something that we choose to make a difference. And so I pray blessing today in your name, amen.
Thank you. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving vacation, paid plenty, and shopped hard. Do you have anything? Derek?
No, sir.
Other comment?
I have none.
Okay, consent agenda, we have claim vouchers of one hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, tax change orders of minus four hundred eighty-five dollars, seventy-four cents, commission meeting minutes for November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and commission minutes, meeting minutes for November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and consider an improved payroll for the pay period of October twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two to November twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Bennett?
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Okay, Kenny, I'm gonna talk about a little rezoning here.
This current request is from the Thompsons and is case number twenty-two oh five nineteen-sixty-eight, request to rezone approximately fourteen point five-two acres from the A-one agriculture district to the RE residential district. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this item and did make a recommendation of approval for the rezoning. The property is located at thirty-nine, thirty-nine fifty-three Rock Creek Terrace, or I guess that's the larger tract that it's being split off from. As we looked at this case, while our appraisers' records do show it as really one really large parcel, it is actually made up of a number of smaller tracts that have been acquired over different periods of time. So, so that larger tract, it was a little less than a quarter section that was sort of part of the larger, or the property that this one was being split off of. I would also note that the property directly to the south of this, there's a number of other houses and smaller parcels in that vicinity that are also zoned currently, the RE district, which they're requesting. So, the planning commission did make a recommendation of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Only question I have is, we got, we got this issue, then on the next issue is that they don't want to do it right yet. They want to postpone it?
Um, oh, so what was attached? So, what ended up happening, this request actually was brought to the planning commission of months ago, and the individuals that are purchasing the property are, I believe, the granddaughter, I believe, and grandson-in-law. And they had submitted a plan to sort of show this size of property, and I don't know that that had been completely shown and agreed to by the grandpa. And then I think another family member came up with some interest in trying to also split off another tract adjacent to this. And if we were going to be splitting more than one property off, then we were going to have to go through the plating process. So we ended up putting it on hold for a little bit while we tried to work all of that stuff out. At the end, they ended up deciding only to do the single split. And then I think everybody was, had been able to sit down and agree to the, the area of the property that was going to be split off. So then we had to, we did republish in the paper because it had taken a couple of months for them to make that decision, and then sort of held a new public hearing once we had that updated.
The delay was at their request, but that, that was in the past and they're ready to go now?
Yep. Yeah, so everything's, everything's good to go now.
Okay. Any questions about this rezoning change? Positive motion to approve would be a rezoning application, twenty-two oh five, ass nineteen-sixty-eight, Thompson, to rezone approximately fourteen point five-two acres from an A-one agriculture district to an RE residential estate district, and amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Thank you, guys. Okay, Christie, you ready?
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
So the first thing that you should have should be the third quarter twenty-twenty-two report. You can see that call volume is still down a little bit from what it was at this point last year. I think we're lagging about ten calls behind where we were at this point last year, but call volume seems to be going up, so I do suspect that we'll match or, or be busier than what we were in twenty-twenty-one. Also, as far as our deposits go, we're looking good there. As you can see down at the very bottom of the page, that is the amount that we have left to make budget, and every indication is that we are going to make budget plus have some surplus, which I think is outstanding since this is the year we've had to have the most income brought in for, through revenue. Medicare still continues to be our largest source of, of payments. And does anybody have any questions about the, about the third quarter report itself?
You say you're down just a hair, ten calls, but that's out of twenty-nine hundred, so...
Yes, it is. It's still significant.
Any other questions for Christie?
Um, I do have the, the third quarter, the adjustment report to sign and the collections to sign, and then I do have just the regular spreadsheets to the, the graphics.
First, we need to vote on this.
Okay.
We need to approve the third quarter, twenty-twenty-two adjustments and the collection report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
The first one should be our activities per district, and it shows that Ottawa South continues to be our largest and busiest district. And in fact, in twenty-twenty-two, we've had quite a significant increase in the activity that's coming out of Ottawa South. Our transfers out of Advent have been holding relatively steady. Uh, the second one's just a pie chart that demonstrates the same thing. Ottawa South remains our largest district by call volume, followed closely by Ottawa North, and then Advent Health.
Do we still use the position that there's education and outreach to try and prevent calls?
We do. We, uh, there are a couple of programs in twenty-twenty-three. I need to send our community education coordinator through, uh, to get certified as a trainer in what's called a stepping on program, and that's something that we can do to go out to the community to help with fall prevention, which is our largest call.
Sure.
Most of our calls are falls from ground level. But yes, we still do. Also, if there's an individual that, that, that was repeatedly calling, we will try to work with them and their physician
Sure.
to make a game plan to help them stay healthier.
Good. Have you seen success with it so far?
To be honest, it's hit and miss.
Yeah, sure. Well, I mean, yeah. Person has to want to help themselves to be helped also.
Sure. For the most part, though, it is, it is beneficial to both the patient and to the department.
Good.
We just have our calls per quarter, per day. We're getting close to averaging about four calls a day just out of Ottawa South. That's not including all the rest of the, the county. Averaging about a one and three-quarters transfers a day, so up a little bit, but not significantly. Medical emergencies continue to be our largest call type, followed by trauma and then transfers. And then something that I've, I've started doing for you is just so you know what types of calls we're going out on with this quarter. Falls again continue to be our, our highest call volume, followed by transfers, then just our sick calls, so somebody just feeling poorly in general, followed by breathing problems, traffic accidents, and then fainting. The overwhelming majority of our patients are taking to Advent Health here in, here in town, so everybody, most people want to stay here in town still, and we're obliging that. Our call times have held relatively steady across the board. You can see that we get really busy about ten o'clock in the morning, and then it starts tapering off about ten o'clock at night, so there's that twelve-hour windows when we tend to be the busiest. Level of care, as far as our patients, we're continuing to see the trend where we are having our, our patients that are sicker than what they have been in the past. However, we were able to bill a few calls at the BLS level, so they were not high priority calls in this quarter, which is new for the whole year. And then last is our unit availability. While our calls are down a little bit, seems like they're grouped where they, because our, our move-ups are, are significantly higher than what they were last year. Status zero, where we have no ambulances available, that's, that's held pretty steady, though, across the, across the quarter. Does anybody have any other questions about this?
Do you know how, do you have any idea how your response time is compared to...
I can tell you that response time, what, depends on where you are in the county.
Yeah.
Obviously, the, the four corners are, are a little more difficult to get to. Construction also plays a key into that with it being on the interstate, but I know that what the, the state looks at for us is what's called our shoot time. So that's the time from when the tones dispatch us out to the time that we go en route, and the average was less than a minute to respond to a call. And when the Board of EMS was here last year, they said we had one of the best shoot times in the state.
Cool.
How's your staffing?
Right now, staffing, we, we have one position that's open, it's an administrative position, but as far as our technicians, we are fully staffed.
Yeah.
Christie, when you do, uh, when you're a status zero, do you keep the timeframe, like, for a status zero for an hour, fifteen minutes, or...
No, we don't do that. We just mark the time that we were status zero. But if that is a, a metric that you would like to see, we definitely could start including that.
What is, so what is your, so what do you do if you are at status zero and you had a call come in?
If we're at status zero and a call came in, whenever status zero happens, whatever administrator is, is on call, we are alerted. And depending on the dynamic of the situation, it may be where three calls just came out back to back to back, and we know it's going to be forty-five minutes before we get an ambulance clear. In that case, administrator on call will come in and help staff a truck. If it's a situation where we have maybe two people or two crews at the hospital and a third call comes out, we know we're going to have somebody clear very, very quickly. But we, we do have plans in place to staff that if needed. Also, if there's a situation where we have four, five, or, or six calls, you know, hopefully that never happens, but we do have mutual aid partners that can come in and help facilitate.
Well, I think when the time would come in, as a decision time, if we needed another ambulance or something like that.
Absolutely.
Or is the timeframe a status zero, ever got excessive or something like that?
Okay.
Now, we already approved it. I guess I was a little early on the get-go on that, so, uh, any questions, Christie, on the Alpha Service? Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
I'll sign these things.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready for staff reports. Derek, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Bear with me, I've got several things this morning to piggyback on Christie's report. I do have a, an update on the Wellsville station. Had a good conversation with Tyler Ellsworth yesterday. As you all know, he's helping us broker this deal with Wellsville. We have ironed out some kinks with Wellsville's staff and their city attorney, and so at this point, we are literally just, so we've sent them the overview of the deal, worked out some sticking points, and now we're actually reducing both agreements to writing. The agreement for the station itself, and then, as I told you, we're doing a separate agreement for the dispatch arrangement. So I say all of that to say that we've made good progress. I don't know if this will happen, but on Wellsville's end, they hope to have the agreements before the council on the fourteenth of this month, and we'll have the agreements drafted by then. Now, whether or not it goes to them, their council, I don't know, but it's possible that we could have those before you yet this year. So any questions about that?
I like it's moving right along.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Second thing, it's been months ago now, and Roy, I think you were, were the initial one to bring this up, but we were discussing expanding the Veterans Memorial, and we were asked to explore architects or firms that could help us with that. Brandon has been in contact with one. They recently did work on Olatha's Veterans Memorial and apparently did a fantastic job. I'm inclined to bring their proposal in front of you just for discussion, but wanted to make sure that's still something that, that, you know, collectively we view as, as worthwhile. I mean, it's, we don't have to proceed with this particular proposal, but it involves potentially doing two or three different concept drawings and letting all of you decide what you like best, but that's, it all comes with a cost, so... We have a very nice memorial now. What's the point of this?
The point was that I've had multiple times, the people soliciting that want to buy bricks.
They want to buy bricks?
Yeah.
We don't have any more available. We were pretty much done when, when, when they put the memorial up, so anybody that, since then, has not been able to be a part of it.
And the current bricks, there's a design in the walkways, uh, there, and they're, those bricks are twenty years old or sort of like that, so...
Is there anything wrong with them?
Pardon?
Is there anything wrong with them?
No, they're just getting worn down, basically.
The soldiers are on the wall, though, right? The bricks are for the family to buy and put their names on? That's probably not something I'd want to spend money on right now, I guess, with everything going on, but... Just to be clear, and I think we're, we're maybe all on the same page, but this is for additional bricks, so the condition of the current bricks aren't really relevant, or at least based on my understanding of what's needed. It's families wanting to purchase additional bricks, but there aren't any more walkways to put the bricks on because with the pattern as it exists, you'd have to break the pattern effectively, which I don't know, Roy, you would know better than me what, I don't know what the pattern means, or if, because that would be another solution, is there are a lot of bricks that don't have anything on them, but we would have to deviate from that pattern, but that would also alleviate the need to expand the memorial. But I just, I don't need that. That, that would make sense.
That's a sticking point, that's a sticking point, is changing what it originally was, intended to be, the walkways.
I guess to me, since the changes aren't to actually honor the soldiers, they're more to, for the family's benefit, I would probably be inclined to say I'd, I'd just leave it. I could see just making a new pattern or adding to a pattern, uh, if they, if they wanted.
It's been twenty years since that was closed down for its purchasing bricks, and we've had a lot of conflict since then, and people want to memorialize their people that, uh, served, served it, uh, in the military. Right now, there's, uh, not that opportunity.
Couple of considerations. One, um, you know, we all know it sits right on the courthouse lawn, brings people into the community. We can use transient guest tax for that. And two, um, because I've not heard from three of you on this, we can bring the proposal in front of you just to look at and look at the cost. I mean, this, it's not insignificant, but it's, I mean, it's under ten grand, uh, and that would be to, for the full-phase design.
It's just for the design? Or is that...
Well, yeah, I, I think there are different scopes of work, and I think the most intensive scope would be under ten grand, but yeah, that's for design, that's not for construction and...
Would, would it be beneficial to actually take us down there sometime and meet with the FW representatives and then just kind of talk about what's there and what, did they think that there's a need to expand?
Yeah, I don't think communication's ever a bad idea. I would say if we could bring them in here, but again, I, Roy, I don't know who we're dealing with or who, who we would...
Basically, all the service clubs are the whole community, basically. And I could be in contact with all of them myself, because I'm in all three of them, or all four of them, three of them, here locally. But it just has come up several times over the years to me that, how do you buy a brick or how do you, at, how do you get, how do you honor your loved one or something like that? See, the wall itself is just ones that lost their life in the service of the country, the wall itself.
Don, Rod, do either of you have...
Well, I kind of, here in the beginning of this thing, and of course, the original was done by, you know, my right, uh, the board, they had at that time, which doesn't exist anymore, and they turned it over to us, and I know it's always been a lot of quest over the years, and I don't remember the name of the system, but I know it had a name of not touching, being the, the open spots between the names. I don't remember the name of the system, but that's the explanation we got back then. Reason why they couldn't, they didn't want to fill in those because they set it with that pattern, and like I said, I don't know the name of that pattern. But I know my dad's down there, my uncle's down there, and it was presented to the people at that time that that's how it would be done, set up, and, and it was run by that board, and we basically didn't have any, any input at that time, and gladly so, because they was raising the money and, and taking care of it and everything. Then once it was handed over to us, and there's always been that conversation for years about, well, I kept, we do some, a little more to add, so we could add some more bricks, because they don't, nobody wants to step on anybody's toes, but what we've done before, so... I'm all for moving forward, but trying to do something's always happening, but, you know, I just go along with it. But Roy is more involved, like I said, directly, you know, with conversations going along, so I'd go by whatever he feels we need to do to move forward.
We had talked at one time about putting additional bricks in the existing sidewalk along there, on the edge of it or whatever, and then at that point, then you could let the people that are buying the bricks pay for the...
The project?
The, the cost of it, but I don't know what they're, with the different...
I feel like Brandon, when we discussed that with him, I just don't remember what it was, but I feel like he had concerns about that.
About putting holes in the sidewalk.
Hey, I don't remember what it was, but Rod, what are your thoughts?
I think it's not going to hurt to explore, see what the cost and stuff is to engineering and make a decision.
Great to see the proposal, right, or kind of the concept. I, literally, it's a packet that I can put on an agenda for discussion. We don't, we even have to ask for a vote that day, we can just look at it. I mean, this isn't an urgent thing, it's just something to think about and consider. And, and there's a lot of considerations. That courthouse lawn is busy, like, and it's only getting busier. There's a random boxes and like, so we need to consider that, too. But yeah, we'll, we'll bring the proposal in front of you, that's, that's no problem. So it's been over four months now, since we shut down the JDC, and you will recall that when we gave our presentation, um, you know, it's hard to, they were projections, like our farm-out costs, you know, all we can do is give projections, and we gave a low projection, what we considered an average projection, and a high one. Our low one was a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and that was based on farming out to Douglas County, that's what we put in the twenty-three budget. Based on four months now of farm-out costs, we are, um, at almost twenty-two percent of that a hundred and fifty-six thousand, so that's great news. So we are under a quarter after four months, we're, I mean, let alone the third...
Second of the year, we're under a quarter.
Under a quarter of the cost, yeah. So Douglas County has had no issue whatsoever with taking our folks, we've been given no reason to believe we're going to have to utilize other centers. And so as of right now, it looks like, even our low projection, it looks like we're going to be able to meet that. In the twenty-two budget, I don't have exact numbers because the year's not obviously up yet, but I think we're going to save several hundred thousand dollars just from shutting the facility down. In twenty-twenty-three, if these projections hold, our savings will be over five hundred thousand dollars. So that's, just wanted to give you an update on that. Thus far, I'm pleased with where that's at. There haven't been any administrative headaches to speak of, seems to be working very well. So any questions about that?
Uh, just, if we continue doing this, is there something we could repurpose that for?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's another, um, another discussion that we're going to need to have. I mean, I think originally, when we had the discussion, we thought, well, let's, let's wait a little bit, let's see, you know, see how this transition goes, let's make sure that, you know, our juvenile count, basically, let's make sure we're not going to need to turn around and use it as a JDC again, but four or five months down the line, there's certainly no indication that that's the case, it's... And it would be repurposing the portion of the building that's not used, because some of it still is, I mean, Yeah. intake, for instance, Absolutely. definitely still being used and... Yeah, we are still using
Yeah.
pieces of that, absolutely, we are. But yeah, I'm happy to, um, happy to bring that back in front of you, if you want to put that on a study session, just to... If you want to put that on a study session, just to have those discussions.
The only other question, my question would be probably more for the sheriff's office, which would be on transportation as far as taking them there, bringing them back for court, taking them back. I mean, that.
Yeah. Well, and I don't know if Kyle's ready to speak today. Not asking you to. Do you have that info or feel? Yeah, and just for perspective, in June, we had one juvenile up there. July, that jumped to three. August, it was two. September, it was three. October, it was two. So it's, we're not.
The whole month. And so that's not at.
Yeah.
Every day there was three. There was, for the whole month, three different individuals for however long.
They're able to appear by video. Yeah.
A couple of those are like, have been like long-term. One of them was in 87 days. So not a lot of transportation back and forth. Like, it's not a bunch of little trips. It was one juvenile that was in 87 days that took up, you know, that two in a month. He was one of them. Three in a month, he was one of them. So. And we had another one that was 27 days. So there, the ones that we're sending up there seem to be staying a bit.
So I say all of that to say, very, very early, but at this juncture, absolutely no reason to think that this was anything other than a great decision, so. Last thing in this. We're, typically, we have a retreat at the start of the year and, and, you know, we can discuss if that's something you want to do again this year, but I've already kind of started. I mean, there's always data that I provide at those. And number of employees is something we always talk about. And Amy and I have taken a pretty deep dive into that. And I just wanted to show you where we're at. So right now, we have 195 full-time employees in payroll. Going back five years or so to 2017, we had 214 active employees in payroll. Now, that's just active employees. That's not positions. So our payroll system isn't the most user-friendly. It's a little harder to ascertain how many positions we had in 17 versus how many positions we have right now. But what I will tell you is I've kept track of that as we found efficiencies and believe that we are down 23 full-time positions. So we're down 19 spots in active payroll. And I believe we're down 23 positions, which is over 10% of our workforce. We've done that while improving the quality of our services. So to the extent, and I don't believe that it's widespread, but to the extent there's this notion that government is growing, ours is not, not in terms of number of employees. In fact, we're down fairly appreciably. 10%, obviously, when it comes to workforce is not. You look at 23 positions, if, if each of those positions, just call it 50 grand. And 50 grand is a very, very conservative number when you consider salary and benefits. You're over a million dollars a year, and that's year on top of year savings. Like, every single year, we realize that amount of savings. So that's, I know that's something that my leadership team has worked very hard to accomplish. It's something, it's, and in terms of my own personal, I guess, achievements or accomplishments, it's something I'm incredibly proud of. And I hope all of you are too. And I don't think we're done yet. I mean, there's, I do think there's still meat on the bone. I, I think we can become even more efficient. And I look forward to doing that. So any, any questions?
Our position, like the Dustin's Corrections Department, is that considered our employees, county employees? So because we, so they grew a couple, but it really wasn't. So even, I mean, and then, and then I was thinking that the Health Department has, we still have kind of a little bit of a cushion there because of COVID.
Well, those are part-time positions.
Oh, so you really are talking, just, okay.
This is just full-time. Part-time positions, that's a little more nebulous, just given the nature of seasonal employees. And yes, we, and Brenda's doing a good job of cleaning that up, but we still do have some COVID staff.
Well, I was just thinking that our numbers probably are even, even more, you know, because, because some of those aren't even our.
The way we utilize part-time staff is almost like a contract employee. Like, we bring in people to mow for four months a year and have no intention of making, keeping them around. I mean, it, the same way you might hire a contractor to do a job so they're not, it's not a part-time you hire and use them like full-time or call them in constantly to the point where you're paying full-time. It's pretty defined, yeah.
Yeah, well, and it used to be that, that there was maybe a bit of a stigma attached to part-time employees. Like, you know, I, I think we assumed that people wanted full-time jobs, but they accepted part-time. That is not the way it works now. People want part-time jobs. And so, I mean, we're seeing more of a demand for that. And just from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, that's a lot better for the county. Like, if we can utilize more part-time staff and if it's what folks want, then it's kind of a win-win. I mean, we've seen a lot of that with folks that retired during COVID and then realized, well, shoot, I, you know, I don't want to stay out of the workforce for whatever reason. They want part-time positions, so.
And we're also able to get really, a lot of times, in fact, good luck getting very quality people, like mowing, for instance. The, you know, we're able to find retirees, people that know the county, know the equipment. They're generally experienced, so they're easier on equipment. And they've just got some institutional knowledge about what's underneath that grass you might not want to hit in certain places in the county and, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
When we look at, Derek, when we look at the decrease in employees, how does that relate to the overall budget? Is, is the budget falling accordingly or the budget?
I, yes and no. I, I mean, if we had 23 additional employees, budgeted for 23, then our budget is over a million dollars more than it is set at right now. But we do give our employees raises every year. And if we didn't, we wouldn't have employees. So some of those efficiencies get eaten because we have to give those pay increases every year. And we talked about that in our budget meeting, the costs of goods and services. I mean, what David's paying for crossroad tubes and what Christie has to pay for equipment, because all of that is going up, you know, we, I mean, our budget has come up. But yes, if, and I just said this, but if we had 23 more employees, we've got a lot bigger budget, a lot bigger budget.
Right. Just had to throw that out because of, there's no direct correlation between the increase in operations in general versus the decrease in employees. I guess you'd say, something like that, but.
Well, those efficiencies are happening at the same time we're sliding backwards as wages and everything in the world goes up.
That's right.
I think it's important to know that our wages are not exorbitant, though last year we were able to, we don't have any positions under 10, right?
Oh, no, not any.
I mean, that, it was last year or the year before, we got our lowest, our lowest wage classification above $10 an hour, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, our, even with the adjustments we did for 23, which I know we're all proud of, we're, we're still, like, we, we are competitive and competitive with organizations that are smaller than us. We're not competitive with Douglas. We're not competitive with Johnson. We're not asking our taxpayers to, to pay our, you know, pay us accordingly. That's not it at all. But we are now competitive with Anderson. We're competitive with Osage. We're fairly competitive with Miami, which that's really the goal. I, I think our employees are reasonable. They understand. We can't pay them like they would get in Overland Park or Lenexa, but we can pay them like they would get in Garnet. And that's basically where we're at.
Yeah, I appreciate the overview about, that does come up quite often.
Well, and I, I appreciate, haven't said it recently, it hadn't come up, but I appreciate the five of you and your willingness to make the decisions you have and indulge our employees. That's, that's not always easy to do, and I appreciate that. I know our employees do. Our retention is up. Our turnover is down. And that's a testament to what the five of you have done. So thank you for that. That's all I have, Roy.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Okay, you got anything? Hey, let's focus anything for Kyle, Justin. David, you got to have something.
I actually don't have much today to, to kind of piggyback on what you, you guys were just talking about with Derek. We are in Public Works. As of yesterday, we are fully staffed. We've gone through periods of time recently where, you know, we've been, been about there, but we are fully staffed and I'm very thankful for that. And we're fully staffed, I think in large part because of the, the, being more competitive with the surrounding counties. We actually have a City of Garnet employee that is now working for us because we're a little bit more competitive and he's doing a fantastic job for us. Not that we wanted to take anybody away, but the opportunity came about and, and so we're, we're thankful to, to have this person. And so overall, that, that, that pay increase has really made it possible for us to be fully staffed. For a long time, we were getting no applicants, months on end with no applicants. That's not the issue today. And so we're able to be a little bit more selective and, and fill our positions. So I'm, I'm grateful to, to the work you all have done on that. The last thing I've got is we've got a luncheon learned next Tuesday. To, we've got a supplier for the, the plastic pipe coming in to teach us about that, that product. Commissioner Waymire has expressed interest in attending, and I just wanted to see if any of you would like to attend as well.
What time are you going to do that?
It'll be about 11:30 is when we'll get started. It'll be in here.
In here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We'll have to be careful about quorum issues and that kind of stuff, but if a couple of you would like to attend. We will follow that up at, at some point. I don't know if it'll be before the end of the year, but at some point, we will have a study session where we will cover a lot of this material during a study session prior to making any, any final decisions on whether or not we're going to begin using that product across the county.
I know Cole's been really interested in it over the years and that's expressed. So I'm definitely willing to have him go and, and be our ears.
It's nothing to notice up a meeting too, if the majority of us do want to come.
And that's right. If, if three of you want to go, we'll just notice a meeting up and that's, that's not hard to do.
I'm going to try to go. I have a question. You mentioned you had several outside counties or towns or, so it's a, and a lot of towns here in Frank County don't get into the big numbers.
I haven't reached out to the, the local communities, but I certainly can.
Okay. I didn't know if, I didn't know if Ottawa and Wellsville.
Ottawa will be here.
You know, so the ones that you probably use a big enough number to, you know.
Yeah, I can reach out to the.
And all the others that don't use very much can get that information from you. You know, we could let them know that we've did a study and if they want to contact, you can give them what information you know about it.
Certainly. And we'll, like I said, we'll, once we get through this and, and we've got, we, we do have some of this pipe on order. When it gets in, we'll, we'll begin utilizing it. That experience together with the, the, the information that we'll hear next week. Plus, I'd still plan to reach out to some other communities. Once have all of that, I'll put it together in a presentation that we can do in a study session. But I can certainly make that same information available to all the communities so that they can, they can take part in that as well, so that we can spread the word, i- if this is ultimately a direction that we want to go.
Oh, you said Ottawa already knows?
Yes, Ottawa will be here.
I'll be going to Wellsville City meeting tonight. That's what I was kind of curious about. I didn't want to say nothing now.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I just need to know a number, head count for, for lunch.
They need to contact you.
That would be great. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. You got it?
I haven't, anything?
The only thing I had this week was the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee met again yesterday and we had like 13 properties, several, lots of properties that maybe this will be the end of the year, but also we talked about expanding the area that in town. And so Mike might be contacting you about maybe doing it during a study session, just to bring it to the board to see what we think about expanding some.
Some neighborhood revitalization?
Yeah, about areas in, in, in town to, to do that. I don't know if, we only, I think, probably have one more study session in December, but anyway.
A- as I was sitting here this morning, the city manager reached out and asked about a joint luncheon to discuss that topic.
Oh, they would, yeah, that would be.
Would there be any interest in that from the five of you? They're looking at the 14th of December to have a, I think the sole purpose would be to talk about neighborhood revitalization.
Is that, what day of week is that?
It's two weeks from today.
I think it's a Wednesday, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a Wednesday.
Be fine with me.
Yeah, it's good for me.
Okay. Okay, okay. Well, then I'll tell her that we'll do that and can discuss it there.
You have anything else?
That's it.
Fill that in, okay.
Uh, the Sampson Grant, uh, they're going to have a press release. I'll let their, they're doing a press release.
Okay.
There'll be about three of us maybe coming to the, the pipe deal tomorrow morning.
It's, it's next Tuesday.
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay.
And it's lunch, right? Lunch?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else, anybody? Entertaining motion to adjourn. Bag it. We're adjourned.